Melissa, will you call us to order?
Yes, the Timneth Town Council meeting of January 11, 2022. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Here.
First off, Happy New Year, everybody and staff. Amendments to the agenda, I'd like to suggest that we move the ordinance amending Chapter 17 on the Land Use Code to the regular agenda and take it off of consent agenda. Does anybody have a concern on that?
Do we need to vote on that?
No, we don't have to vote.
It's 16, yeah.
Would I say Chapter 16, Article 6?
Yeah, just making sure we got the right.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so we'll move that to the end, Melissa.
Okay.
Public comment, I assume there's nobody?
Yes, there is no one.
All right. Next, consent agenda, anybody have any comments on it? Okay, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda passed unanimously. Reports, council reports, anybody have anything?
I just have a quick, and I apologize, Mayor, if you were going to mention this, but just wanted to let everyone know that the election is coming up this year and that if people are interested in running, there's, the packets need to be turned in, I think it's January 24th, and just wanted to let anyone interested know that if they have any questions or want to talk to a council member, I know I would be available. I'm sure a lot of you would be available as well, so if they do want some more information or just want to get some questions answered, that I'm available.
Perfect, good comments. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up something, I went through the drive-through light show that we help sponsor. It was excellent, and as promised, it was better than the year before. And the council or the town might want to look at putting together some kind of group that would maybe put up some kind of light thing that represents Timneth in that in the future years with a sign saying this is by the, you know, the town of Timneth kind of thing. Just a thing, because it was, everybody I've talked to has loved the thing, I don't know how many of you guys got to go through.
It was awesome.
The mayor through twice, so, good deal, thank you.
Yeah, I went through it four times, each set of grandkids. All right. The only thing I want to mention is, we previously passed a resolution, we just did pass a resolution approving administrative managers and stuff. One of the things in there is that we review the insurance policies, and so I have asked Lisa to do that in the next couple of months, that she brings the insurance policies and apprises of how those are and stuff as a report. So that is going to happen in the next couple of months. Yes, Lisa?
Sorry, this is separate from that, so I'll wait till you're done with that piece, but I just wanted to. I was, you mentioning review kind of made me think that, as a council, I believe we're supposed to do staff reviews for Aaron Adams, and I know he's been here over a year, so maybe that's something that as a council, we can look at doing his annual review or something like that as well.
Thanks for, thanks for, let me tell you, we have started it. So I've talked to the, our human relations lady, Jennifer, she has, and I'm looking to Dawn and Matt, I think, she has sent out questionnaires and evaluations for them to fill out so to assist us in making those evaluations. And Lisa, we have to do both Aaron and Lori, and so we do both of them. Their evaluations have, you know, the evaluation form has gone out to the department heads, I think there's five of them. And they'll come back, and then we will go in exec session, review those, and then, and then later then have a meeting to, well, we'll decide how we think best to present that and stuff.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, we have that scheduled for January 25th.
The, oh, on special session for going through that?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Melissa, and Jennifer's going to?
She will be here and she'll.
Help us through it?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, Jennifer reminded me of that, and so I've helped guide a little bit, but she's, she's got the ball totally in, under control. All right, business, resolution number two, series 2022, a resolution approving trailside active adult site plan. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor, as we get technology up and running. So as you'd mentioned, this is a development site plan proposal for what is going to be known as the Trailside Active Adult Living Facility. This is actually located just to the east of us here at Town Center, just south of Timoths Trail Road, south of the future under construction PD site, north of Stonefly Drive highlighted there in blue. The zoning for this property is R3 single-family residential with PD overlay. This development site plan proposal is for 168 multifamily senior housing units on eight and a half acres. This site will contain three multifamily residential buildings ranging in, that will have 56 dwelling units each, and they will consist of one and two-bedroom for rent apartments. Along with that, there are six separate buildings containing garage parking spaces. The site will include a clubhouse, pool, pickleball court, putting green, and dog park. With this site, they are providing three acres of landscaping and open space, which is roughly 35% of the site, and that exceeds the 25% required minimum, and they also do include the 12 and a half percent of usable open space. The required parking for the site is 101 spaces based on 0.6 spaces per unit for senior housing. This applicant is actually providing 105 spaces for surface and then 58 garage spaces. Planning Commission, this actually, this item went to Planning Commission back on the 21st of December in 2021, and Planning Commission recommended approval by 5-0 vote. Staff has reviewed this application in conformance with the Land Use Code and found it to be in conformance, and architecture is similar to that of other apartments in the area across the street and other architecture in the neighborhood. So with that, I will turn it over to Savannah with Norris Design for a brief presentation. Savannah, if you can jump on there, you can hear me.
Thanks, Kevin, I am attempting to share my screen, but it's indicating that, oh, there we go, great, thank you. They're with me here. Can you all see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Savannah Benedict Welch with Norris Design, here representing the Trailside 55 Plus Active Living Development. We do have a team with us this evening. Joining me this evening includes Spencer Edwards and Abby Stark from Houseman Construction, representing the developer. Also with us this evening is Ryan McGreen, also with Norris Design. We have with us Matt Geiser and Dave Johnson from Studio 951 Architects, and Ryan Banning and Jeffrey Dorsh from Wilson Engineering are also joining us this evening. Kevin did a great job kind of laying out the site, so I'll just be real brief here. As you mentioned, the site is located just to the east of Town Hall, containing eight and a half acres. The current land use is vacant, and current zoning is R3 residential and plan development overlay. Also, as mentioned, the proposed development includes a 168-unit senior housing community. Within that, we will be proposing three 56-plex residential buildings and six garage structures. The gross density proposed is 19 dwelling units per acre, which aligns with the zoning for this area. We are also proposing a network of walking paths and sidewalks, which are proposed to provide pedestrian connectivity on and off-site. Additional amenities include a clubhouse with a rec room and other features, which I will certainly address further on a later slide showing the floor plan for the clubhouse. We are also proposing a pool, fire pit, and gathering space, pickleball courts, putting greens, a dog park, and also elevators within each building to accommodate individuals of varying abilities. Few other highlights of the proposed project includes additional housing opportunities for seniors in this area. Also, we propose to provide quality architecture and extensive landscaping, on which I will share some additional renderings of the proposed buildings on later slides as well. We are also promoting an outdoor recreation as shown on this site plan. Certainly a attraction for this site. We are also promoting walkability with a series of paths and sidewalks, as mentioned, and also a mix of parking opportunities. As Kevin mentioned, we meet the parking requirements, plus the garage spaces as well as tuck-under parking. So each building also includes 16 tuck-under parking spaces for residents, and then, of course, the surface parking and garages, surface parking will be available for guests. We briefly wanted to share our project timeline, just to kind of show where we've been with this project and kind of the timeline of how we got here. We did meet with the town of Timneth back in April of 2021. They provided some helpful information to gear up for our site plans in the middle, which occurred in August. We did about a four-month review period with staff, and they were very helpful through the process. Then on December 21st, we had the Planning Commission hearing, and they recommended approval of our application. And here we are this evening, sharing our project with you all in hopes for approval. So these next few slides provide some helpful renderings of the proposed buildings. This is a rendering of the most southern building. Shown this small site plan kind of showing where this perspective would be from. So as you can see, kind of this area, there of course will be landscaping along the southern boundary as well to help with kind of that visual appearance along the street. This is also a view of the most southern building from the north facing the garages as well. Then another perspective of the garages directly north of the most southern building, kind of giving a visual of what these buildings will look like from kind of more the interior area. We also have some perspectives of the clubhouse, so this is a rendering of the entrance of the clubhouse. Also another perspective of the clubhouse area. Whether clubhouse shot, and then this will be the most southern elevation, kind of south, westwestern elevation of the clubhouse. We certainly can answer any questions you might have. As mentioned, the architect is also here and can answer any questions you have regarding architecture. We also wanted to share the floor plan. As you can see, there's a number of activities within the clubhouse for residents, including gathering spaces, a fitness area, craft area, and a theater. So we are also making sure that there's also indoor features for the seniors. And that, I believe, is all that I have for you all this evening. So as mentioned, we have a team with us this evening and certainly answer any questions you might have regarding this development. Thank you all.
Go ahead, Brett.
Do you anticipate using any on-street parking?
We do not, no.
Okay.
Could you put up the map at the, I think it's the first map that you showed?
Let's see.
Keep going, keep going.
This one here?
Yeah, so I see it says, here's my, here's my concern, are we having any problems with ADA being that you've got? I can't tell how many soft surface paths are. I see them out there by the detention pond, does that continue on to where you've got Detention Pond C and the eastern side of building two?
This area here?
Yes, and then go straight up, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, there you go. So is that soft or hard trail?
I believe that is hard surface trail.
And that is correct, that is concrete trail.
Great, and my only concern was ADA, I don't think soft, and this, this is definitely going to have people with wheelchairs that we ought to make it so it's accessible to them.
Absolutely. I believe the, this area over here would be soft surface, but everything around the clubhouse is hard surface, from what I understand.
Okay.
So that actually brings up an additional question I have, I know you mentioned eight handicap parking spots. Will those be the wide ones that allow for van and ramp access? Because like Mark said, I do think that there will be a need for some of those wider ones as well.
I know we, we plan to meet the required, the ADA requirements as set forth by the town. I believe they're all van accessible, am I thinking correctly? On that, Ryan?
Would you like us to jump in? Yeah, we have parallel, parallel handicap parking spaces in front of each one of the buildings, basically right at the entrance, so there's, there's essentially an access that goes across the road. There's the, basically the crosswalk right there, and then on each side, it kind of wings out, and there's an ADA accessible area. So Savannah, if you point up to Building 1, the south side of Building 1 right in there, there's, there's two spaces, and then there's, there's actually just a buffer area where loading exists, and that, that is widening up for vans.
Great, thank you.
Rick, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for you, I was concerned about the parking, but when you showed the pictures, it indicated that the Building 1, 2, and 3 will also have parking garages inside.
That's correct, yeah, each building will contain 16 tuck-under parking.
Yeah, so will every unit have access to one of the parking garages, or how does that work?
Well, there's a total of 168 units, so I don't believe every unit will have access to tuck-under parking. However, every unit will have access to one, one parking stall. And I believe for senior housing, the requirement was? Like six, is that correct, Kevin?
Correct, yeah, the senior housing requirement's 0.6 spaces per unit.
However, we are providing more than the requirement with the tuck-under and garage.
Yeah, and then residents will be able to rent a garage from you if they want.
Yes, that is correct.
The other question I had for you is, this is going to be a restricted 55, how does that work?
So the restricted 55 for the local code is 55-plus is head of household. But historically, the average age of tenant in these developments is between 65 and 72. So that's typically the demographic, but per the HOPE Act, it's 55-plus head of household.
How does, uh, plans like this deal with grandkids coming and all of a sudden has to stay with grandma for the next three months?
So that's, I guess, tackled on a few different routes, but the property management company who we will use has a couple of different options that they do, and they can restrict guests to a limited duration on-site. Or there's also things that we like to do and offer hospitality or guest suites where you can rent out a unit for, you know, five days at max to house an additional family member if they come to visit.
One other question, will your pool and clubhouse then be available to memberships from outside of the develop, this, this area?
That was, I guess, has not been brought up on this development itself, it would just be for tenants' use only. But we have come across that in a different development with buffering townhome lots, that there is an HOA that pays a fee to use that. But we have designed the clubhouse and amenity space for 168 units, so if there's anything further that might get a little bit crowded.
Yeah, it might or it might not, you, you might want to look at that because of the other development in the area. other development in the area around this. I'm sure there's other seniors that would probably love access to a pool like this and a putting green and that and
Yeah.
the amenities that you have.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that's not an, an, an option. It's just something that hasn't been brought to our attention yet. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Brett, your question, because I, I heard the answer that there will be no, uh, need for off-street parking, I mean, on-street parking, but that, you've, you've got one car per apartment. And here's the concern, that's right across from the police, uh, station. So if we're going to have a bunch of cars pounded up along where the, uh, police station is, I think that's a problem.
So Timothail Road on the north side is not designed for on-street parking. Um, so there would not be any on-street parking overflow, anything like that. Uh, Stonefly is the only one that is designed potentially to have on-street parking, and that is designed with, uh, the parking lane and then a separated bike lane and then the travel lane. So it's a true design for, uh, on-street parking. Uh, so that would be the only location. If anything, on the south side there was Stonefly, um, to have any overflow on-street parking.
So I assume it's going to be wider than the current Stonefly road that's beside the apartment complex?
Correct, it is.
Are you okay with that, Brett? Okay.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
No, I just say I'd stress too that I, I'd think you're under parking spaced here. I know what our code is and everything, but if you look at the amount of people and uh, I know with my own parents and with my wife's parents and that, when they moved into a facility like this, uh, immediately, they don't want to get rid of their cars. And they have two cars going in and they want to keep two cars until they get used to a different lifestyle of that. So that's where I was glad to at least see the buildings themselves have garages, but, uh, we also know, uh, many occasions where we would go and visit and other visitors would be visiting people in these facilities. You have this many people in each one of these buildings and eight, uh, different people show up. That's going to eat up parking spaces pretty fast, so.
Yes. And I guess to address your, your first comment about tenants having two vehicles, when they move in or for a certain period of time, the tuck under stalls themselves are designed to have a long driveway to them to allow for another vehicle to park behind that stall. So if there's forty-eight tuck under garage stalls, there's, you know, ninety-six stalls total, if you would.
Thank you.
I just want to make a, a comment that, um, I, I deal a lot with seniors in, in my job and, uh, there's such a need for senior housing. So, um, I appreciate that, that you're coming forward this and the developers. Um, it was mentioned to them when we, when we approved this, this subdivision, a few years back, that we had, that we had hoped for some senior housing options. So I'm glad that you brought that forward.
Glad to be given the opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Do we need anything from you guys?
Uh, just want to add one little, uh, last bit for, uh, council member Collins. The, the tuck under is not actually calculated within the surface parking, uh, parking stalls. So the hundred and one or a hundred and five spaces that they have do not include those tuck under. Just because that is, they're in addition to. Yep. So, uh, with the potential ninety-six that I think they called out, it's roughly two hundred, uh, surface and then the fifty-eight garage. So it's well parked over. Oh yeah, they're, they're going to be partying hard.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion? For approving resolution number two, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving the trailside active adult site plan.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, resolution number two, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving the trailside active adult site plan is approved unanimously. Ordinance one, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing a, a mail ballot election on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two and setting forth other details relating there to, um, this, my understanding is this is, uh, a motion that comes about every year that we have a, uh, election and it sets forth what's there. Melissa, do you want to make a comment?
Um, I don't have much to say unless you guys have, uh, any questions. It is, uh, standard language for um, any election we have or that's what's used from the surrounding communities also.
Okay, uh, and no public hearing?
Um, it's set for a public hearing, but there are no, no one has signed up.
Great.
So.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to accept ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing a mail ballot election on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two and setting forth other details relating there to pass unanimously. Ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-one, an ordinance, uh, approving referral of a ballot question to the electors to restore municipal authority to provide high-speed internet, including improved high bandwidth services based on new technologies, telecommunications services and cable, uh, television collectively called advanced, uh, services to town owners. Is, let me ask something real quick. Is twenty twenty-one the correct number? It should be twenty twenty-two?
Yeah.
Okay. So or, ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-two is what we're discussing. Brian, do you want to give a couple minute what we're doing here? I think the, I think the council, we've talked about this before and stuff, but just for, mainly just for the people listening in, I think.
Yeah, no, that, I'm happy to do that. The, um, state bill one fifty-two. Get a little clearer here. State bill one fifty-two removed the authority for municipalities to participate in those special services. So what we're asking, we're putting the ballot, uh, putting the question on the ballot and asking the electorate whether or not they would like, uh, to restore that authority to the town. Uh, there's no obligations if that is passed for the town to, to make any actions, but it does allow us to pursue, um, providing those services or contributing to, towards providing those services to the town. There's been a hundred and five of these ballot issues across the state. A hundred and four of them have passed on the first, the first time. The only one that did not was, uh, Longmont. That was in two thousand nine and it came back around in twenty eleven and then, and passed there. That was the third time that it had come back, come up. So since then, there's been a, a pretty amazing track record on this. Um, some of our neighbors who have opted out are Berthood in twenty twenty, Denver in twenty twenty, Severance in twenty eighteen, Greeley in twenty seventeen, Wellington in twenty sixteen, Fort Collins and Loveland in, in twenty fifteen and Estes Park in the spring of twenty fifteen. So uh, it's pretty, it's pretty common, um, policy and, uh, adoption for the.
Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Rick.
Yeah, and this really in a question, but reading the tea leaves, the tea leaves here, the state more or less uh, says unless you provide yourself with a, an amendment like this to it, you're under the state rule. This gives us local control over this and it doesn't obligate us to anything. It just says we have the ability to control our own destiny here.
That's correct. It doesn't preclude anything or require anything. It just gives us the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Uh, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion for ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-two?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Um, ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance approving referral, a ballot question to the electors to restore municipal authority to provide high-speed internet, including improved high bandwidth services based on new technologies, telecommunications services and/or cable television services collectively advanced services to town users passed unanimously.
I do apologize for the length of the title.
Yes, we got, you guys got to get a little bit more cryptic.
I, I think you have to, you have to blame the attorney on that. I think that was the wordy attorney on that.
All right, Lori, you're in trouble. All right, we are now at ordinance number three, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance referring ballot questions to the electors regarding amendments to the town charter. Lori Orr.
We have Carolyn on the line, I think. Oh yes, there you are, Carolyn, hi.
Carolyn's here.
Hi. Thank you. Yes, Carolyn Stefel from Dietz and Davis, special counsel to the town. And you have before you on second reading the ordinance that would refer to questions to the electorate for amendments to the town charter. And this had first reading at the December meeting. At that time, the council made a change to remove one of the questions. We had considered three questions initially and they removed the question that would change from April elections to November elections. That's going to be postponed to a future time. And, um, so the other thing we're going to do is, um, we, the second change we made was, uh, so the first change, ballot question that you're going to refer is to reinstate term limits. Remember there's constitutional term limits um, for every local government official, including home rural municipalities, unless it's waived by the voters. It has been priorly waived by the voters, so this would reinstate those term limits. The, um, electors, the elected officials being the mayor and the council members would be limited to two consecutive terms and then would need to take at least two years off before, uh, running for another term. So consecutive term would be if, unless term is at least two years apart. Uh, you can still run from council member to mayor or mayor to council member, since those would be different offices. And so this would, that's the first question. The second question is really a cleanup to adjust some of the dates to make sure that they conform to the municipal election code. And both of these would only be on the ballot if there is a contested election. So the election is being held in April of twenty twenty-two. This is a public hearing, so you're going to want to take public comments. But you guys have any questions on the, that proposed ordinance?
Does anybody have any questions? We've talked about this before. Yes, go ahead.
I just, I just have a logistics question. So I know you mentioned that these will only be on there if it's a contested election. If not, would we then have to bring this back if we wanted to do it for a special election? I'm assuming we would just bring it back and revote.
That would be my recommendation. So you could do a special election in November of twenty twenty-two and have it be coordinated with the county's election. And then you'd pass a separate ordinance to call a special election and to refer these to that November election. And then if you wanted to add any additional questions, you could also do so at that time.
Okay, like the broadband question as well. Okay, thank you.
So Lisa, the idea here is if we don't have an election because there's only two or less that run, we won't have to incur the cost of it. But then we could tag on to November where we won't have to incur much cost, um, and put it on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we would have to vote on that again because there will be a new council at that time.
Yeah. Okay, um, Carolyn, you got anything else?
No, that's it. So you just want to see if there's anyone signed up for public comment. That's it.
Yeah, and, uh, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. So, um, do I have a motion for ordinance three, series twenty twenty-two?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance number three, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance referring ballot questions to the electors regarding amendments to the town charter passed unanimously.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, the last thing we've got on the agenda that we, uh, put from the consent agenda. Uh, and actually, if you're, uh, following along on this thing, go back to page forty-nine and then we'll be going from there on. This, uh, ju- just to give you sort of how this works, this is the first reading. Uh, we will not be voting on it. We will be giving, um, our feelings and we can make changes based on it. You know, head nods, I think is probably what we'll do. And, um, and just go through. I don't think we need to hit each, um, ordinance, but we're going to cover everyone that there's a comment on, okay? And so, uh, I'm going to, just to get the ball rolling, start on page forty-nine, we talk about retail fuel stations. And in that, um, P and Z asked certain provisions to be relooked at by staff. And so this isn't the final, final version of what I think P and Z was hoping for, nor the staff. And so, um, what I'm suggesting, and again, it's just a head nod, that we send this back to staff, ask staff to make the, the changes, corrections, uh, addendums, improvements, whatever you want to add to this, so that we have a complete, um, conditions and permitted conditions for retail fuel stations. Okay, is everybody good with that? Okay.
Before you leave fuel stations, I had an addition to, to talk about. Do, do we allow, uh, stations between, let's say, Signal Tree and going, uh, east along Harmony Corner?
Are you asking for currently or with this amendment?
Currently.
Yes, currently we do.
Yeah. In those, uh, I know a number of communities now are having those stations. If they do go in, turn their back towards the street. If you will, they're building towards the street. So it doesn't really look like a filling station on this side. And then you pull in and go around and go in. I don't know if we would, while you're looking at that, you might want to look at that kind of thing because I know we're trying to get the best appeal going along the Harmony Corner.
Yeah, they're, they're, within the Harmony Corridor, there are design standards that would set up for things like that with the placement of buildings, parking, things like that. Um, so that's already in our standards for the Harmony Corridor. Um, but we can look at that just a little bit further.
Great, thank you.
So, um, does anybody else have, Brett?
Uh, yeah, so I'm looking at page fifty-two of the packet, the conditions around the liquor store.
Julie Richards.
Calling in. It's a hot topic. So it's basically what I, what I'm looking at, some conditions I think strike a little bit better balance, uh, with, with how I think the overall community would feel regarding the use of liquor stores without a drive-through. So the conditions I propose, uh, for table four point one, I'll propose that the use of a liquor store be prohibited in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. And then for section four, four nineteen, uh, which are the conditions for the permitted use of a liquor store, I propose that the additional conditions be added that are as follows. Uh, no liquor store within five hundred feet of any lot zoned RE, R one or R two as measured from property lines. And no liquor store permitted within three hundred feet of any lot zoned R three as measured from property lines. These are numbers that I've kind of gone over with staff, uh, to make sure it was, it was reasonable with all the various commercial zonings that we have in the community. Uh, and I wanted to get these out there in case anybody in the community or in the council felt differently, so.
Yeah. Aaron, so would this, Brett, would this, um, I guess I envision a downtown core. Would that impact the downtown core? Because if you, if you had some kind of like a retail on the bottom and, uh, you know, living up, up top, if that were to happen?
Uh, if you have a mixed use, it would not apply to that. It's just a neighborhood commercial.
Got it. So RE one, two and three.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, and, and to that, um, with, with Brett's additions, the downtown Main Street is zoned business. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Downtown Main Street is zoned business, which it was, it's already a conditional use
Okay.
uh, in business. This, I think, is mainly set up for the Harmony Corridor and the CC zoning district is what I believe Brett's looking for.
Great. So this would prevent something like a liquor store going in on, um, Three Bell and River Pass.
That was one of the primary example lots we were talking about.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, sort of a community commercial, not that I think it would make a lot of sense there anyway, but it would prevent that. I think your neighbor applied for knocking down his house and putting up a river. Max Liquor Store, that'd be nice.
Brad, you know, you're looking at about a seven iron.
Lisa, did you? Lisa, did you have something?
No, I was just kind of curious as to the reasoning, um, I'm not saying whether I agree or not, um, related to the retail fuel station and the quarter mile, um, that addition piece, um, is that just, is that following certain other communities or, I, I'm just looking at, you know, I'm thinking of the areas that could potentially house one, let's say, I know there's gonna be commercial at, um, you know, right up by Harmony and School House or Club or whatever that area is, um, would, what, what brought the quarter mile, I guess?
So the, the, what brought the quarter mile, um, and to, um, actually kind of then go back to one of your questions with that, Fort Collins has a three-quarters of a mile restriction, um, the reason why we did a quarter of a mile was to, uh, and, and if you kind of drive down Harmony and maybe some of the other intersections in, uh, Fort Collins, you sometimes see two, maybe even three gas stations on corners, um, since we still have a, you know, a fresh Harmony Corridor or a fresh commercial for, for Timnith, uh, the goal was to not have, you know, gas stations at, you know, two gas stations at every corner, um, of a major intersection, uh, staff looked at a quarter mile initially just because we have such a small corridor and such a small commercial per se, uh, you know, compared to Fort Collins, that, um, you know, most of those gas stations want to go at a full intersection, which are on the half miles typically, um, so a quarter mile would kind of get, you know, one at every potential half-mile intersection, um, at that point.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I don't know, as we finish the discussion with Brett's proposal and stuff, is that what you want to talk, let's, so let's finish that before I go, okay, so, uh, Rick, okay, so do we got, all of us agree on Brett's suggestions, okay?
Yeah.
Then did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to tack on something with this, uh, with the quarter mile, so let's say, um, the Mountain Vista Corridor opens up for us, you know, up there, I mean, we're talking years from now, obviously, um, and I guess they can deal with it then, but if there was a similar situation now to like we have with Costco and, and, uh, Murphy, Murphy Express, I mean, those obviously are not a quarter mile away from each other, but if there was something like that, would that be, um, we would, would they just have to get a condition for this, or would it be different because of that zoning that it's in?
Um, so right now, the way it's slated is it's for all commercial zoning, that's one of the things that we're gonna, we're gonna go and look at, um, that was from the discussion at planning commission, um, that's one of the things we're gonna look at, um, going forward, uh, to bring back, you know, potential changes, uh, do we limit it to the Harmony Corridor, do we limit it to all commercial zoning districts with this restriction, uh, so that's one of the things that we will be looking at in the next two weeks to come back with.
Okay, great, thanks.
Well, I've got one on fifty-nine, um, so here's my understanding of where we are on this, um, currently, the Harmony Corridor, uh, standards, were you part of the committee on that, Aaron?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
Okay, uh, but anyway, um, stated that no childcare should be in the Harmony Corridor, uh, this went, uh, as a discussion to, staff then came back and decided to make it more lenient and suggested that you could have childcare on the Harmony Corridor, but you could not have a childcare facility on Harmony Road. That went to, um, P and Z, P and Z discussed it, and on a three-two vote, they said that a childcare center could be on Harmony Road, and I guess, I, I'll just state my preference right away, is that we go with staff's recommendation, which was that to go ahead and allow childcare centers on the Harmony Corridor, but not to allow them on the Harmony Road, okay, open it up. Okay, Brett?
Um, I'll, I'll comment that I'm, I'm certainly comfortable for first reading to, to lead it, as staff has put it, uh, I think the information's out there for anybody that's watching and wanting to comment, um, and I think a full discussion on the final result of that is, would be good for second reading, but, but I'm supportive for, as I agree with you, Mark, I think for first reading, let's, let's leave it how staff has recommended it.
Did you have something, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with your suggestion, I, um, I don't see any reason why, why a daycare couldn't be located, um, in the Harmony Corridor, but the way that Harmony is, is shaping up, at least for the sections that we have already, um, there's really no direct access off of Harmony anyway, so having it, I, I don't see that, that having a, a daycare on the corridor itself would be of the highest and best use, I think our, our preference is to have a retail use there, um, not a service use, and either way, you're gonna have to go through a roundabout or however you're gonna go to get in, or maybe, maybe I know there's going to be a, when you're heading westbound, there will be, um, an entrance in there, you know, but a single entrance, you're not gonna be able to, to exit that way, you're still gonna have to circumvent your way through the community to get to the roundabout and back on it at, uh, Signal Tree, right, there, um, so, um, so I, I just don't see the point of, of that, and I don't think it's the highest and best use for, uh, daycare to be there, um, and, yep, that's my comments, I guess.
Lisa?
So I have a question, so I know that they're planning on putting in, and this kind of relates to what you were saying about service versus retail, am I correct that the animal hospital is going to be directly on Harmony Road?
Correct, um, that was, that was a use back at the time when the Harmony Corridor was, was thought of that, you know, could be a, an allowable, I don't know if, uh, at the time, I can't remember if it was, you know, that one was specifically discussed of saying, yeah, that's fine to front Harmony Road, uh, typically with that, though, also there are some retail aspects to a veterinary hospital, you, um, you can go in and buy some, you know, food, stuff like that, but it is predominantly service, um, but that one, uh, I can't quite tell you what the justification was behind that one, um, you know, I think as staff level at this point, um, we would rethink that a little bit, um, to be a similar condition, uh, but at the time, you know, a couple years back when the Harmony Corridor was set, that was one that was, uh, an allowable use.
So you're summarizing it in, it's already grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I feel personally, I wouldn't care if there was a daycare right on Harmony Road, so I think if we have, for example, if there were somebody interested in putting one in on a certain particular part of Harmony Road, I would not personally be against them doing that, um, I think there are guidelines as far as what the building looks like and that kind of thing, and I don't feel that Harmony has to be solely retail, I think services to, um, community members and residents to me would be a high priority, um, so I personally would be okay with, um, allowing it to back or front or however that would look to Harmony Road.
Rick? Yeah, just where I stand on this thing is, I'd like to support the staff recommendation and try to get the staff to work with any future applicants to try to find ways to move it, if it's gonna be in the quarter, move it to the second level, if you will, so like on Signal Tree, they could just turn to the, uh, what, north there, and then come back right into the, uh, the area that where the daycare would be if it's on the second level, so I would support staff going forward, try to work this thing out.
So I think, uh, that to bring it to the next hearing is put the original staff recommendation in there and then we'll discuss then, okay? Anybody, any other things on these ordinances that anybody would like?
I just want to mention the one, uh, absolutely, the, uh, I, I imagine we're talking about Old Town with the, uh, outside speakers.
Not necessarily, um, it would be any zoning district.
I'm fine with that as long as they're, they're a good neighbor.
Any other comments? Okay, none, so, um, Lori, help, help me, Lori.
So now, um, I think what we want to do is, uh, just get that set for a public hearing then, correct?
Okay, do we make that as a motion or what do we do?
We do, because we took it off a consent agenda, so let's have a motion to set it for a public hearing on January twenty-fifth.
Okay, so do I have, let me get the right?
What, uh, let me, let me see if maybe we could amend that a little different, say that we'd, uh, like it on the twenty-fifth or when staff recommends it, so if they're working on negotiations and it's gotta be at fall of one more, two more week period, it's not the end of the world.
So, so what he suggests, and Lori, is that we, uh, recommend that it goes to a second hearing to be held on either January twenty-fifth or February, whatever it is, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, we just, um, have to notice it twice, but it's fine.
Well, we'd only, we'd have to notice it twice only if we skip the twenty-fifth.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
That probably makes sense, because I, I know you guys have some work to do on the, the fuel stations and stuff, and I'd rather see us do it right the first time than have to come back and, and redo it, so I think that's a good recommendation, Rick. Uh, Lori, do you want to give me the wording I should, or, or can you say it, because then I can just say, uh, um, what you said, so can you, can you make the motion, please?
Yes, um, I'd like to hear a motion, um, for setting ordinance number four, series, uh, twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter sixteen, article six of the Timnith Land Use Code for January twenty-fifth, twenty-two, or alternatively, upon request of staff at a later date.
I would like to make that motion as Lori stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Any further business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you.